Res zoning.
You will.
Yeah.
We're going to call this February fifth meeting of the Vance County Board of Commissioners Board. Thank you for being here tonight and uh. Well, the first thing we'll start off is we'd like to have Pastor, Associate Pastor Mary Anderson from Shantler Baptist come forward. And uh lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Most holy and precious Father, as we gather this evening, dear Lord, to take care of business, Lord, for the county of Vance and its surrounding communities. Lord, we pray and ask you to speak to our hearts, to our minds, dear Lord, so that whatever is done and is said, oh God, that it will be pleasing in your sight. We thank you, Lord, for each person that's present, each one that will come, dear Lord, Father God. Oh God, just have your way, have your way. And Father, we ask that you will bless each one individually and that you will bless us all collectively. Father, this prayer we pray in your name, amen and amen.
We've got a couple of seats that are empty tonight. We've got Commissioner and I think Attorney probably feeling a little under the weather. And Commissioner Austin is actually, uh, he's at a leadership academy with the school of government. There were, I think, over a hundred and eighty applicants and they've just twelve individuals and he's anticipating that. So he's known a lot, trying to legally form with the county and appreciate him and his energy doing that. So just to sort of know that tonight. There was no one registered to speak to public comments, so we don't look no public comments tonight. First performed then is Frankie Noble, Nobles with our employer Engagement Team.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We're actually going to call on our deputy county manager, Catherine Bigelow, to present this well-deserved award tonight.
Thank you, commissioners. I stand before you today with great pleasure to honor not only an outstanding employee, but out, an outstanding individual who has truly exemplified the qualities of dedication, hard work, excellence, often in our workplace. It is with great pleasure that we gather here to celebrate Randall Medlin as our employee of the month. Randall is not just a team player, he is a leader who leads by example. His ability to take on challenges head-on, coupled with his creativity and finding solutions, has sig, has significantly contributed to the success of numerous projects. Randall's enthusiasm and passion for his work are contagious and creating a positive and motivating atmosphere within our team. What truly sets Randall apart is his ability to adapt to change and navigate through complex situations with grace and composure. His resilience in, in the face of challenges has not only benefited him personally, but has now also had a positive ripple effect on everyone on our entire team. Randall's exceptional problem-solving skills and strategic thinking have undoubtedly played a pivotal role in the success of our recent initiatives. In the recognition of Randall's outstanding contributions, it is absolute pleasure to present him with the long overdue Employee of the Month Award. Randall, your hard work, dedication and positive spirit have not gone unnoticed. You are a true asset to our organization and we are very fortunate to have you as part of our team. Thank you for setting a high bar and inspiring us all to be more electronic and reach us to excellence. Please join me in congratulating Randall.
He definitely deserves it.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Portia Brooks, our tax administrator with untimely exemptions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just realized I left my folder downstairs, but I do have five applications before you. Two are elderly exemptions, I mean, three are elderly exemption and two are disabled veteran exemptions. And all of them um was after June, um, June first, and if they would have been brought on time, um, they would have been approved.
Okay. Just for. The one there. We have um. Glenn Austin.
Uh huh.
With the disabled veterans. Just going to read those real quick here. Langwood and Cynthia Martin.
Uh huh.
Disabled veterans.
Uh huh.
Anne Skipwith with an elderly. George Taylor with a um elderly exemption.
Right, and Tucker.
And then Charlotte Tucker with an elderly exemption.
Correct.
Okay. What would be the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Uh, it's a rezoning request at twenty-three Ridge Road, Ridgeway Drury Road. Okay, you're going to take care of that, miss? Once you describe the project, then after you do that, we'll, we'll open the public hearing.
Yes, good evening, Michael Harvey, Planning Department. The purpose of this meeting is to hold a duly advertised legislative hearing for you to receive the planning board rega, uh, recommendation, uh, staff and public comments, and deliberate and finally take action on the zoning atlas amendment uh, for a parcel property located at twenty-three Ridgeway Drury Lane. To rezone the parcel from uh residential low density, which is R thirty, to general commercial or G C one. The application was submitted by Pamela Fleming. It's a point nine four acre parcel of property uh with direct access off of Ridgeway Drury Road. Um, in your packet, I've provided you a copy of the parcel's designation on your future land use plan. It's not located in a transition area, it's located in a rural area of the county. Uh, surrounding land uses and zoning. Excuse me. Uh, the parcel is predominantly surrounded by R thirty uh general use zoning. It's a residential zoning district. There is commercial zoning to the west. Specifically, there's a Dollar General and a gas station. There's also a self-storage facility to the south of the property. Um, as articulated in the staff report, the applicant wishes to rezone the property, general commercial one. Uh, the argument uh is that the area in question is becoming uh more non-commercial intensive uh with the development of the Dollar General. She believes that uh the area is best suited uh to allow for additional non-residential development activity, and she believes this parcel would be best suited for a non-residential zoning designation. Uh, I will briefly summarize the staff comments. Uh, general, a general use map amendment process is detailed in section eleven of your ordinance. The first step in this process, as you'll note from the staff report, is a staff review and comment. Our analysis is in this ordinance. The second step is a planning board review, which has been completed. Their recommendations contained herein, which I'll review in a moment. Last but certainly not least, as this board holds a legislative hearing uh to review and take final action. Uh, section eleven, three establishes policy guidelines that have to be followed as it relates to how general use rezoning requests are reviewed and handled by both the planning board and ultimately the elected officials. Um, that the proposed will place property similarly situated in the area in the same category or in appropriate complementary categories. You'll note my comment uh that there are commercially zoned parcels to the west of the parcel and non-residential land uses in close proximity to this subject property. There is convincing demonstration that all uses permitted under the proposed zoning classification would be in the general public interest and not merely interest of an individual small group. Want to remind you, I've provided a list of the land uses in the general commercial one zoning district for your ratification on what would be permitted in this district if it was rezoned. Uh, there is convincing demonstration that the use is permitted under the proposed zone classification would be appropriate in the area. Um, you've already got both general commercial and highway commercial in the area, and you have similar land uses already in existence in proximity to this parcel of property. That's the staff comment. There is convincing demonstration that the character of the neighborhood will not materially or adversely be impacted by this request. Uh, there is an argument that needs to be made that the area already supports non-residential development activity, especially since we've already seen rezoning to G C one and H C or highway commercial. Uh, the proposed changes are in accord with the land use plan. Uh, as I've already indicated, this parcel is not in an identified transition zone, but is in an area where the county has previously determined that non-residential general use zoning is acceptable. Uh, so you all will have to determine whether or not you believe it's consistent with the land use plan. Want to remind everyone that per your ordinance and state law, you are not permitted to impose conditions on a general use rezoning, which means you can't limit the land uses that could be developed on this property. If you rezoned to G C one, any land use in that district could be developed on this property subject to the applicant going through the appropriate procedure as prescribed by your ordinance. I've provided the goals of the comprehensive plan that support uh and potentially refute this request, and I've also provided you the planning board recommendation uh where they found that the request was consistent with provisions of the comprehensive plan, specifically goal one, to encourage development at a rate and in a pattern which can be effectively and efficiently served by existing and planned services and facilities, and goal four, to promote, expand and diversify the economic base in Vance County to maximize the use of human resources while protecting important natural resources and community values. Their rationale was the area in question has existing non-residential zone parcels in the area, and in their opinion, the request represented a logical extension, the existing non-residential development activity. The board finally determined that the request was reasonable and in the public interest by promoting additional economic development activities within the county, allowing for the logical extension of existing non-residential development in the uh activity in the area, and would continue to promote an economic development tax base for Vance County. County administration recommends that you open the legislative hearing to receive public comment, you deliberate on this request, and that you make a determination that the request is or was not consistent with the adopted nineteen ninety-six land use plan and is or is not reasonable and in the public interest, and then act to approve or deny the request. I have provided you a statement of consistency and reasonableness that provides you opportunities to make both an affirmative or a negative recommendation at your pleasure. Unless you have any specific questions for me at this time, Mr. Chairman, I turn it back over to you. I'm happy to respond to any questions you have at.
I'll now open the uh public hearing. Is anyone from the public that would like to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Gary Hux. I live at nine seventy-one Mount Pleasant Church Road, which is uh just below where this is to take place. Have no opposition for the rezoning, but what I'd like to ask is if the planning would also look at the D O, work with D O T and do a traffic impact. Uh, at this point in time, we have a Dollar General there. We have a small, not a gas station, but a small store on the corner. Plus, we have the um, there's a uh storage area that has just been developed there. But what is going on is is that during the summer months of the year, we are seeing double traffic, and it's becoming extremely dangerous there. And so we have no objection to the rezoning. We just ask that they work with D O T and maybe do a traffic impact, stoplight, caution light, something to help us with the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there one, anyone else who would like to speak? Any commissioners have anything to speak of?
I just have one question. This is, th, this is just to um erase my ignorance on this area. What do you mean by transition area? It says this is a transition area. What is a transition area in our community?
Right, actually, the, the staff report says this is, this area is not one, in one of the identified transition areas, so.
Say it's not.
You're right. Your land use plan identifies transition areas where you're going from rural or suburban to a more urban or even commercial area. You've got four identified transition areas in your land use plan. This isn't one of them. This is just in a rural area of your county. Thank you for asking. That's a good clarification.
Also, I don't know what this is, a gentleman who asked in terms of traffic doubling during the summer. I noticed the other day, I was on with a bun and everything, and he said, work with the Department of Transportation. Then when the traffic becomes, I noticed a lot of places they're putting in what they call the roundabout.
Mm-hmm.
Now, who winds up working with that in order to investigate whether or not that's feasible and everything for something like that?
As this is, as these are state-maintained roads, that would be a determination made by the Department of Transportation.
Do we engage with Department of Transportation to do that or what, or discuss it? I don't know.
There would have to be a traffic analysis done, but the direct answer to your question, Vice Chair Kelly, is that the uh board could direct the planning staff to reach out to the Department of Transportation, begin a dialogue uh to begin the, an analysis of traffic impacts in the area.
Because that's.
That's what this gentleman's asked us to do.
During the summer, I was out there the other day, and I know during the summer with the churches, with the wreck, with the things that are going on, that it can, you can be, you can be almost a half many, many car lengths back waiting to turn right, left and everything.
There's three churches down, down the road from where this is like placed. It's only had three churches plus all your summer travel coming to the great call out into the wonderful. Uh, it just, it doubles, almost triples the traffic about six minutes out of here.
I believe in the past, um, when the applications were made, there's a review by D O T.
Okay.
In terms of the necessity of turn lanes and that kind of thing. And they've typically done that in the past.
Right, and because this is just a simple rezoning, we have no land use proposed. The Department of Transportation hasn't completed a review because they will be reviewing a site plan once and if it comes in, but even at that juncture, um, we would probably still need to push the issue with D O T, Vice Chair.
You also have to build a camp ramp, which is a red uh in line without a pretty far amount of felt there. When you come off Jackson Falls, you turn left and go down towards the camp ramp, which is right there on that same area, which we had no issue with rezoning, just that we're worried about the traffic.
Well, I s, I support your idea in terms of traffic. I'd just like to make sure we do something so that when that does occur, that we take the necessary steps to ease the traffic pattern.
Some of this will get handled at the site plan stage, but that also presumes that the Department of Transportation finds cause. And again, you can direct us at the appropriate time or direct management to direct staff uh to engage D O T in a dialogue, which would probably be the most advantageous uh reaction from this board.
Well, any other comments?
I'd like to make one comment, and that comment is this. You'd never have had all this development going on right there at an intersection if you didn't have water. Water is what makes a difference. You provide utilities, you end up getting it, but you wouldn't have had any of this happening if you hadn't had public water. And that's, it all happened after them.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Close the public hearing. What would be the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve zoning change.
Second. Okay, and Commissioner Hester, I'm assuming you're making that motion consistent with the planning board's recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Sorry, you can turn around and come right back. Looks like growth opportunity night in Vance County.
Doing my best.
The next, next item on the bin, agenda is a rezoning request for thirty-six twenty Raleigh Road, and I'll let you run through a brief synopsis of that.
Yes, sir. Uh, this will be a little more brief because you've already heard a lot of this, so I'm not going to regurgitate all of it. Um, Mr. Steve Bennerson wants to rezone thirty-six twenty Raleigh Road, which is a twenty-one point nine acre parcel of property from its current light industrial zoning designation to general commercial one. Um, Commissioner Taylor, uh, based on comment made at the, from the last case, I'll just jump in and say that this particular property is located within a defined transition area as defined in your comp plan. And in your packet, what I have provided is the definition of this transition area specifically for the board's edification. It's an area that has been identified where you want to see heavy industrial and commercial growth on the south side of the city of Henderson, uh, where you want to see office, industrial and commercial activity. Um, from a zoning standpoint, you have city of Henderson to the north with a mix of retail and industrial land uses. You have agricultural, residential, light industrial and residential medium density, which is R twenty to the south. Uh, you have agriculture, residential and light residential to the west. And then, of course, you have Raleigh Road and residential to the east. Uh, I've attached the vicinity map to help you all identify the area in question. Uh, the applicant would like to rezone the property to general commercial one. Um, their rationale, the short and sweet of it is they believe with the proximity of residential zoning to this property, uh, commercial development activity, office development activity would be more advantageous than light industrial in terms of trying to address impacts to adjacent residential property. They also believe that from a marketing standpoint, as noted in their application, it would be easier to market the property's redevelopment to G C one versus L I. Uh, from a staff comment perspective, uh, what I will reiterate is that uh per section eleven, three of your zoning ordinance, I have provided staff comments to the various guidelines. Uh, from my standpoint, the request is consistent with your land use plan. I have also provided in the staff report a listing of the various land uses in G C one. I'm obviously not going to go through them. Uh, they're provided for you, but will remind you that an applicant, just because they rezoned the property, they're not guaranteed the development of any one specific land use. They still have to go through the appropriate procedure, whether that be site plan or a special use permit, depending on the classification of the land use. Your planning board has recommended that this request be approved, finding it consistent uh with the goals and policies of your land use plan. Uh, they also determined that the request is reasonable in the public interest uh for many of the same reasons they did with the previous cases noted in the staff report. So, Mr. Chairman, without further ado, what you're being asked to do this evening is hold the legislative hearing, accept uh the planning board recommendation, accept public and staff comments, ask appropriate questions at the appropriate time, close the legislative hearing, and make a decision to either approve or deny the request. Thank you all very much. I'm available for questions if you have them.
Okay, I'll now open the public hearing on the rezoning request for thirty-six twenty Raleigh Road. Is anyone from the public who would like to speak?
My name's Woody Evans. I live at thirty-seven eighty-eight Raleigh Road, which is the property right beside the Dollar General. Um, that's already been approved, of course, and then built in it. Um, and just, just have a couple of things, kind of like what they were talking with the development around. Like I said, I know, you know, trying to grow and everything, but at the same point, um, it, we need to have some D O T stuff to be looked at. Same thing I brought up before with the drainage ditch beside of our house. We have called for years, everybody down there is, the state keeps, they put it in, but now they don't want to make any kind of adjustments to it. The road is sinking, the um pipes underneath the Raleigh Road, um, the road is sinking, they're three-fourths full of muck. Um, the area side of house needs to be cleaned out. Um, the flooding that we were having uh has been reduced a lot since they did the other stuff to the Dollar General where that water's not coming over on us. But I do feel like with other developments and stuff going back there, that needs to be addressed. Um, again, for environmental type stuff, where is the water going? Somebody, you know, the state needs to come in and fix some of these issues before someone gets hurt. And I, and I've talked to the, to the D O T department. I've been by the D O T department here. I've called Raleigh. And, and basically, I just keep getting the runaround, but until the water basically is standing on Raleigh Road and somebody, I guess, gets killed, they don't worry about it. And I, and I told them, I said, that's just ridiculous. Um, that is a major thoroughfare. It's more traffic on Raleigh Road than is number one highway. And like I said, some of that stuff, you know, they just need to address it. And it's not going to be a costly thing. I don't think they're going to have to go twelve miles down the country. But it's just something needs to be addressed by maybe someone else other than us locals, you know, with the town parcel. The other part is, um, we have a lot of noise with the Dollar General next door. Like on Saturday morning, the truck comes in, you got a lot of banging and clanging, and the trucks are coming through in the back part of property that, from the trucking department, it is already there. And, and, and I just speak for myself. I don't know if other residential stuff around that area is having that type of noise, but if, if we have other development there, um, maybe we could, you know, maybe some fence or something could be put up. Just, you know, some guidelines for everything just gets done, and then we're, I'm trying to contact somebody with that re, you know, requested that time. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who would like to speak? Any of the commissioners have any comments?
I'd just like to have a man, let's look at this situation that he just brought up.
Yeah, Raleigh Road has been on the flooding and. Yeah, it's gone to the top of the list.
He says he's given, he's giving a lot of personal time to this, and it's gotten no results. So I think our manager should look into this and uh contact him and see what else is going on out there and get a chance to.
That Raleigh Road, I mean, that area where he's at, where he lives is, is tough. When you go back to the old Perry lumber site, that bottom there, uh, that's horrible when it rains on. That creek is now backed up, and I've seen cars sideways coming through that. I mean, it's, it does need some attention from D O T and, and that's something we, we need to go ahead and uh and make that, that, that full. Okay. All right. Any other public comments? Close the public hearing. Uh, what would be the pleasure of the board?
I'm making most of the grant, the uh recommendation according to the planning board.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Make sure, again, like you said, we take your concerns to.
I've seen Ms. Perry's left hand working real hard over there.
Okay, okay. Can we get your, get your concerns covered, sir? Okay?
Okay, and so, okay, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. All right, next on the agenda, we have Randy Cantor. He's our new carts director. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. I hope everybody's doing well. Oh, my backup on that. Did that appear? Yes. All right, I've been told I have five minutes. Is that correct? I'll try to keep it down to that.
Keep moving.
I'm here at the request of the Colonel, who's on my board. Uh, just want to give you a little rundown on myself and what things are happening in carts. Uh, I started here in July of twenty-three. I have over thirty-one years' experience in both urban and rural experience. I began my career in Orlando, Florida with Lynx, which is a large three-county urban system. I moved to Murphy, North Carolina. I became the director of that system, Cherokee County. I moved from there to Carterag County Transit over in Morehead City, and now I'm the director of carts in Henderson, trying to make my way around the state. Um, I won't go into depth on this. You all know your system. It's both rural and urban. Um, community transit, we have one fixed route, demand response and specialized services to contracting agencies. Um, this goes over the funding, local county match. Is it? Do you need me to lean over? Okay. There we go.
Can you, I don't know where the people can.
Um, I get a fifty-fifty. Sometimes I'm told I'm too loud and sometimes they can't hear me. Um, but this will go over the past grants, administration costs, eighty-five, fifteen, capital costs are eighty, ten, ten, and operating grants are funded through the state with.
And operating grants are funded through the state with fifty fifty with a local match. We usually use rope funds to to match that. So that we don't come to you with that match. Currently, our fleet consists of fifty five vehicles. We have forty four L T Vs. L T V stands for light transit vehicle. It's the vehicle you see that has like a van on the front and a fiberglass camper on the back. We have two twenty one pasture, two sixteen pasture L T Vs and one minivan. We have two service vehicles, a Dodge four wheel drive truck and a Ford Transit Connect, which is a little tiny thing. Currently, our staff is at fifty six drivers and twelve office staffs. Of the office staff, we have a director, a finance manager, H R manager, who's always also payroll. Operations coordinator, program administrator, mobility and analyst and administrative assistant, plus we have four dispatchers and a mechanic. And our future fleet, there were no replacements in F Y twenty. We received nine vehicles in twenty one and one in twenty two. This is very detrimental. We should be doing this every single year to keep the fleet up to date. And it hasn't been done. So now we're playing catch up. So in twenty three, we replaced ten L T Vs with six L T Vs and four transits. And twenty four, will we replace in twelve L T Vs? And I have requested twelve more in twenty five, including some garage equipment. This is to get our garage up to the point that we can do all repairs and maintenance in house. We will not have to go outside for any assistance. And we just got approved through the state, which was like pulling teeth, but we now do our own inspections. So we don't have to take our vehicles out of the out of our garage for any reason. Big step forward. Here are your trips for F Y twenty two twenty three. We did forty five thousand eight hundred ninety six trips in Vance County alone. You can look at, and this is on here, so you can see it later if you need to. But of course, employment is the biggest, which is great to see. Cross county, cross county is included in the forty five thousand, but of those forty five thousand trips, twelve thousand of them. Were picked up in Vance and left Vance and went to another county to their destination. That's a big number. This is your rope dispersment for F Y twenty three and twenty four. This is to help you understand the kind of money that we're spending. So if you see E M P L, so R G P is Rural General Public. That's anybody can ride for any reason. E M P L is taking people to employment or to training for employment, not college. That's going for welding class or mechanic school, things of that nature, something that they'll have once they leave a V O tech. But as you can see, we've already overspent that blind item by a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars. Let that sink in for a second. Ed Tap, we don't know the last two months. We haven't gotten reporting on yet. But this is one of the reasons why in future discussions, I want to talk to you all about becoming direct recipients of your rope funds. Right now, you got the funds. The Rural General Public funds are then distributed to us. But the E M P L and the R G P stay with you. This year, E M P L came to us and we'll catch up, I mean, Ed Tap, sorry. We'll catch up with that. But any of these funds, and if you notice like with Ed Tap, that's less than a third of what you were given for the year. If these funds aren't spent, you lose them. We need to have control of that. Because we can make sure that they get spent. So in the future, let's have that conversation. Currently, carts is financially sound and has been since the beginning of the fiscal year. My expectations, it will remain that way as we seek out funding sources that have not been utilized in the past. There are other grants out there that we can access that were never looked at. I plan on changing that. Carts has been approved for a three year micro transit trial grant beginning in the fourth quarter of this year. The micro transit service will only operate in the city of Henderson. And could replace the current shuttle service with better service. I say that, but at the same time, the Colonel and I have put together a memo to send to the state to see if we can get monies to shore this up. Right now, the shuttle that runs in Henderson, out of carts coffers, costs us seventy five thousand dollars a year. And last year, it moved five thousand people all year. Not good. But the micro transit grant, we'll be able to update our current scheduling software tablets utilized by the drivers on the vehicles for greater efficiency. In F Y twenty six, I will be applying for fifty three ten operational grant funding. That's elderly sixty five and over. And disabled. This will not interfere in any way, shape or form with any other department. In Vance County or the city of Henderson that currently gets fifty three ten funding. This is strictly for transit systems. This is strictly for operation. Any questions? There you go. I got it in five minutes.
Any questions from any of the board? You you said, I believe somewhere in there, might be wrong on the numbers, but you're getting a a greater number of the L T Vs than you were. The compact vans. It's my understanding that generally the riding ridership on these is is generally three or four people at the most.
You're correct.
So. What trends are developing that would indicate that we would need these more expensive to operate vans than we would a smaller?
In actuality, the L T Vs get roughly the same gas mileage. But an L T V chassis is an E four fifty like Ford Heavy Duty. They hold up much better. As a matter of fact, one of the reasons I said it's detrimental in not replacing these vehicles on time, we have several. Vehicles with well over three hundred thousand miles on them and they are ran every day, day in and day out. You don't see that when you get down to a little V six in a van. So they hold up much better. And it's also if with a L T V, we can put two, maybe sometimes three wheelchairs on there at a time. Versus with the smaller transits, if we put two wheelchairs on it, you might have two seats available. So it really limits our capability. And then at that point, you're sending a second vehicle out to pick up the same people that you could have. Had you had the slightly larger vehicle. We're not going for the L T Vs that are huge. We're going for the ones that have like eight passengers on them or maybe five passengers with two wheelchairs.
Okay, that's the the ones in the past, I think, were fifteen, sixteen passenger.
Yes, sir. No, sir. We will not be doing that. As a matter of fact, I want to talk to my board next Tuesday. Right now, we have four buses that require a C D L. With having a C D L, our insurance on those buses. The minimum is five million dollars a year. If we didn't have those, we could drop it to a million. So I've reached out to our insurance company to find out what kind of cost savings that would be. And then I've also spoke to my operations person to tell me, are these truly necessary and are we using them every day?
And you had some tire changing equipment that wasn't compatible with the type of vehicles you have.
Yes. Yes.
Is that something you'd just be able to maybe sell and then buy the stuff that is proper?
Actually, that's a good question. I'm actually looking into. So what I'm trying to do, one of the four pieces of equipment I've asked for on the capital grant for next year is a brake lathe. So the company that sold that device also will take in trade ins. And a lot of times, since it's basically brand new and used, it hasn't been used. We're hoping right now that they'll take that as an even trade for a brake lathe. So the brake rotors on the front of the buses can be turned in house. We're not buying new ones every time we do brakes. Yep, and I'm looking for a front end alignment machine that goes with our lift. So we can do our own front alignment. So transmission flush machine, we can do our own transmission service. And then we're looking at some cleaning equipment for the garage to keep it up and keep it safe.
One of the other major issues, I believe, was ridership and the people were scheduling and then not fulfilling. That ride appointment. Has that gotten any better?
It's getting better. I won't guarantee that we're a hundred percent, but I have not heard any complaints of late of that. And the reason being is, so what we did, we had four, we had a scheduler and a backup to the scheduler and a couple of dispatchers. Dispatchers just basically take calls throughout the day. What we did was we pulled all four of them out. We're trying this out. We've tried it for the month of January and we're ironing out the kinks. But we made one each responsible for a county. So each person now does one county for the scheduling and the dispatching is covered by all four. So we're hoping that will give us better service response. With them knowing their clients and then knowing the area also, the people have to know the area, they are, you know, whatever county, Vance Franklin, that they're working in. So I've made several changes to in-house staff and we're working through the bugs right now.
I like what you, I hear you saying what's Mr. Brum's question. I'm not in terms of nothing both, but what I also, in terms of listening to your presentation. That you bring expertise in trying to find sources of revenue so that you can. Provide services that will cost you, increase your revenue. That's what you're trying to do, right?
That's what I'm trying to do.
I like what I'm hearing. I just hope it falls through. I think you were saying there, money's out there that you can get that you you can bring to cost, which will be beneficial to this this region.
Yes, that's one of the reasons why I'm going to go after the fifty three ten grant.
Okay.
So in Cherokee County, I was there for three years. After the first year, it never cost the county a dime after that. I moved to Carteret County. I brought the system in-house. At the time that I got there, the operators and the buses were owned by an outside company called First Transit. We brought them in-house. We made everybody come in and and work for the county. After the second year, through my tenth year there, the system actually made money. And it's not, I'm not supposed to say that out loud.
Stay with us for a while?
I'm not saying I can do that here, but if I can pull the four counties together and we can work together. If with your support, I think we can do it.
Okay. All right. Any more questions?
One area you did not cover.
Oh, Lord. Smithfields?
That is a vital interest in this board. It's the financial health of carts. Would you speak to the financial health of carts?
We have, I can honestly say by the first of October. We had in excess of a million dollars in the bank. Right now, we have November, December, it's dwindling, but that's because we're having issues with the state. The state, when you send in a request for funds, you invoice the grants that you've been approved. The state has their own financial system that they work through to prove and make sure that it's a valid cost. Right now, we have grants, requests, invoices, all the way back to September. And so if we could get those funds in a timely manner, we could keep our bank account. Full, but we're struggling to do that and it's, but it's not our fault. Another issue we had was with D S S or the the system online is called N C tracks. When I start. Oh, have you heard of it?
Yes.
When I started here, we were all the way back. So in July, by August, I kept hearing grumblings from my finance person. And I finally said, what is the problem? And she says, we haven't received a payment since October. Seriously? So I made a couple of phone calls and I got hold of somebody at N C tracks. Well, with with D H H S on the state level. This isn't working. Well, we'll look into it. I said, well, look into this for me. If I don't start getting money, I'm going to stop moving your people. That's exactly what I told her. Within a month, we started receiving checks. So we are now caught up through the month of July. With the D S S, the local Medicaid D S S trips. And we're now, we've invoiced August. We're moving forward. We're trying to get the train back. We got it on the tracks. We're just trying to get it out of the station. And get it caught back up again. So and I'm not bragging about that either. I'm not that type of person. I'm just saying, sometimes. You got to know who to call and sometimes you got to know what to say. That's all I'm saying. So once we get those caught up and we get the state caught up, because every time we call the state to check on an invoice. It's a different person that we're speaking to from another subcontractor, from a from a consulting group. And it's like enough with this. Put somebody on this. Well, this is what we need. And but, you know. Ninety six. It's ninety six or ninety seven systems in the state of North Carolina. So I mean, we're not the only one tooting our horn. I'm sure everybody else is having the same problems. What can you do?
Everybody loves N C tracks.
Got to, got to.
So I guess what you just told us is that the financial health of carts is healthy.
We're healthy. We really are. So we just got two new buses in, the the transits, like you spoke of, the smaller ones. And we have two more that we're about to receive. And to keep us from getting in a financial strain, the company that I ordered the twelve new ones from for F Y twenty four. I've already spoken to them and told them, do not deliver more than two at a time. I can, I can pay it. I can invoice the grant. As soon as I get the money, I'll say, deliver two more. But I'm not going to put the system in a clutch where we don't have the funds to run it day to day. That will never happen.
Can I ask you?
You could ask me anything you want to.
Two couple of questions. First question is, and I'm trying to make sure I'm up to date. So you 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 have received approval of grants of money you have not received. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Can you tell me how much money approximately they are behind giving you that you could have grants? Available. I mean, that you've already gotten approved approximately. I don't want to know exactly.
Like right now, what we're waiting on?
Yes, sir.
Right now, I'm waiting on three hundred thousand dollars.
So so that that's in addition to what you got in the bank is three hundred thousand.
That's correct.
So that's that's what what you're short now as far as that concerned. Have you always had this problem about the fact of not getting? Across the state? Have you always seen this same problem or is it worse here than it's been anywhere else?
Oh, no, 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 it's not. It's not a here thing or a there thing. That's not, that's not it. D O T has a very difficult time keeping staff. So every time you get somebody in there and you get them trained, about that time, they leave for more money.
So you've seen this problem when it comes to other counties?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. You just have to stay on top of them. That's all. But we'll get it one way or the other. But I just want. My goal is to never go below a certain amount of money. Folks, this is the first time I've ever ran a system that I had to. Maintain that bucket of money. I've always worked for county systems, so there's always been that that bucket you could draw from at any time. But so I'm very cognizant of it. And my finance manager and I, well, her office is next to mine. I told her I'm going to put a window in the wall so I can see her. Make sure she's in there doing what I'd be done, but no, she does a very, very good job. I have a great staff. I really do.
Well, you know, the state is notorious for being thirty, sixty, ninety days behind paying. Their invoices. So hearing that is.
But six, you know, September.
Yeah.
We're approaching six months.
That's ridiculous.
If you're a small business, you and you're doing business with the state, you could go out of business having money coming in, but you can't get it. And you find yourself not being able to pay your bills.
You absolutely could, very easily. So that's why we stay on top of it. My staff, I've instructed them, come to me at any time where they see a cost savings. And let's look at it and figure it out. Is it worth it? That's why I said we're evaluating. We're evaluating or not, whether or not the whole insurance savings is worth it.
Anything else? Appreciate you being here tonight. You got a bunch of good people over there doing a whole lot for our community and we appreciate them too.
They really do. They absolutely do. And I appreciate you saying that. But I mean, people don't realize. Where I came from, the director of H R once told me that, her exact words were, the drivers, well, all they do is drive around, pick people up. And the next day, I sent her a two page dissertation of everything it took to be a driver for a public transit system.
A lot of people don't understand, sometimes that ride starts at three o'clock in the morning and.
The training and and what you have to with drug testing and everything. Your life has to be wrapped up around your job. There's no, there's no way around it.
Okay.
So a lot of respect for my folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Personally, thank you for what you've done for the carts, the program in this community.
I'm getting.
Brought it a long way. Where it is today.
I don't know about that.
And you're working to bring it further, so.
I am. I won't stop. So if anytime you all have my business card, at any time you want to reach out to me, you know how to get them. Okay?
The way you said, when that money they haven't paid you, you're going after it. That sounds good.
Pleasure meeting you both. I'll take care.
All right. Next on the agenda, we'll move on to our water district board. I'll now open the water district board. And. You're going to come forward, Logan, and I think you got some good news for us tonight.
I think so. I feel like it's good news.
I think so. I feel like it's good news. Um, good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Uh, my name is Logan Parsons with L K C. Uh, I am here to talk about the Vance County Water District Phase One B project. Uh, it's been in the works for a while, as most of you know. Uh, I'm specifically talking about Contract One, which is the twenty-three, almost twenty-four miles of water line, uh, in the southern part of Vance County. Um, for quick reference, Contract Two is the elevated tank rehab. That was awarded, you know, several months ago. We're well underway, um, and construction should be starting on it uh, within the next couple of months. Um, definitely by summertime, then you should see some work going on at that tank site. So, uh, tonight, uh, I bring before you a recommendation to award the Contract One project, uh, to, uh, our, our low bidder that we have, who is H G Rentals. Um, it's kind of a long story, but I'll give you a, a quick rundown. You should all have my recommendation in here. But basically what happened, you know, we opened bids, uh, last spring. We were significantly over budget because of the project. Um, we looked at all sorts of alternatives of how to get the project within budget. Um, the, the issue was we were, we were so far out of budget with it uh, that we felt like we were really jeopardizing the, the project and the use of the project. And we do have USDA funds tied to the project, and if we, if we modify the scope too much, we were um, kind of creating another issue with USDA. Fortunately, um, you're from work of, I'm sure yourselves, uh, and your local representatives. Uh, the Vance County received a earmark, uh, through the, the twenty-twenty-three state budget, uh, four million dollars of grant money. Uh, the four million dollars was requested for this project and received for this project. Um, so because of that earmark, what we have been able, and the reason I'm here tonight is to provide this recommendation to award to the contractor utilizing your existing USDA money, uh, your current owner contribution, uh, which is also, uh, some, some other money that you received. And then, uh, paired with this earmark money, this four million dollar earmark money, then you can complete, and you can award the, um, the, uh, the Vance County Contract One Phase One B project for the entire scope of the project, the entire twenty-three miles, serving all, um, all the residents that have been within the scope for the last five, six plus years. Yeah, or longer. That's right. So, uh, the, the award must be made contingent upon, uh, what I put my letter was two things, is USDA approval. Um, and we've had it, we've had a call with them. They're on board with, with what we're recommending. Um, it also must be made contingent upon N C D Q Division of Water Infrastructure, who is, who the earmark is funneling through. They will administer that earmark money. So we're chasing them, making sure, uh, as, as the representative or gentleman just said, we're, we're um, making sure they've got the application, they're getting what they need in place, and they can start funneling that money back to you as soon as, as soon as we've got all the approvals. And then USDA also requires you go to L G C, uh, so you'll have to have, because there's, there is a small portion alone, a portion alone on the project. Um, so you'll have to go to L G C for that.
What, what do you anticipate start date for the project, breaking ground?
If all goes perfectly, we'll be shoveling the ground by June.
You want a motion to approve this?
I think so. You ready for it?
Absolutely, but I got one comment to make. I'm gonna make the motion, but I want to make this comment because I, I want us to really think about this a little bit too, because if it hadn't been for two people, you couldn't do this. It's Lisa Barnes and Frank Sos. And they're our representatives in Raleigh, and that's how you got the four million dollars. If it hadn't been for them, we wouldn't be able to do this. So yes, I'm making the motion.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Hester.
With his passion, which come, I'll second it. With, with, with his passion and comments, I'll second it.
All right, so that motion is made contingent to the conditions that Logan stated. Uh, is there any discussion on that? All in favor, aye. All opposed? Passage announced. Thank you, Logan.
Very good. You're welcome. Thank you.
Let's see what else we get out of him, okay?
And, um,
he, he did say we're going to start in June, right?
By June, so probably within the next month, we'll schedule a water committee meeting so we can discuss some stock pricing strategies and those kinds of things.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Um, next thing we have is monthly operations report. That was all in your packets. Uh, if anybody's got any questions on that, we can refer those, but I'll add some questions and we'll close the water board and move forward. Any questions? Okay, closing the water board. Uh, next we have our county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, good evening, commissioners. So the first thing on my report is a resolution for a Black History Month. So February has been observed nationally as Black History Month. Vance County has traditionally encouraged its citizens to participate in related events that create a greater awareness and appreciation of contributions made by African Americans. And so the recommend, recommendation is just to adopt the resolution in support of the designation of February as Black History Month in Vance County.
It's a pleasure of the board.
Recommend that we adopt a resolution in support of the designation of Black His, of February as Black History Month in Vance County.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so the next thing is, um, at your retreat back in January, the commissioners, um, came up with five goals for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So the following goals were prioritized during the retreat of, um, for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. The first one is locate potential land sites for a new EMS station and a new EMS substation in the northern part of the county. The second one is renovate existing jail or construct new jail and begin process for locating funding. The third one is upon completion of the fire study, determine the next step as recommended by the Board of Commissioners. The fourth one is begin construction of Phase One B of the county water system and offer public information and or sign-up meetings with a goal of increase in sign-ups twenty percent above the current level. And the fifth goal is to work with the city of Henderson to build better relationships for services offered. And you all also identified some continuation goals. So the first one is just begin planning and identifying opportunities for distributing and utilizing opioid settlement funds and support educational programs that seek to reduce drug dependency. And the second one is to retain or assist in the creation of one hundred and fifty new jobs and ten million dollars in new investment in Vance County. And so the recommendation is just to approve the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five goals.
Pleasure, board.
Uh, this chairman and I recommend that we approve the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five goals as established by the commissioners at their retreat.
Can we have a motion? And we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so the third thing on my report is the zoning ordinance text amendment. So at your January eighth, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting, the board held a public hearing to review proposed text amendments to the zoning ordinance to expand the current list of allowable industrial land uses, focusing primarily on permitted uses within the light industrial and office institutional general use zoning districts. The intent of the amendments was to make Vance County more competitive with respect to economic development recruitment activities and expanding the local industrial tax base. During the meeting, staff and the county attorney identified additional modifications to the definition sections designed to incorporate terms from state regulations associated with landfill operations. The amendment package has been updated and recommended by the attorney and is presented for final action. And so the recommendation for that is just to adopt the revised, updated zoning ordinance text amendment as recommended by staff and the county attorney.
If we had a public hearing on this last month, uh, what would be the pleasure of the board?
You want a motion to approve it?
Please.
You got it.
All right. We have a second?
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, aye. All opposed? Motion carries. All right.
And so just the last thing that was on my report was the Board of Equalization and Review. So of course, with Reval year, um, it's, um, predicted that we'll have, um, a, a heavy year for a Board of E N R. And so I spoke to, um, Chairman Bryman and as well as Vice Chairman, um, Kelly this morning, and we would like to take that to the committee. Um, so we'll do that with the committee.
Yeah, we'll move that to the planning committee and we'll meet on that and be ready to have a recommendation at our March meeting.
March fourth meeting. Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, next we have our finance report.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. I just have one thing for this tonight. Animal Services has a truck that was burned in a fire a few years back, probably. You know, the keys burnt, excuse me. The keys burned in a fire, uh, fires, how many years ago? More than five. I do know that. Um, and we would, we don't have the keys. We don't have a way to get into the truck. We would like to scrap the car in general. Um, Elections also have three filing cabinets that were in need of replacement. The drawers did not open, handles were missing. It doesn't, the doors did not lock either. We would like to scrap those items as well. The recommendation is below to approve the property.
Okay. Motion please. This chairman, uh, recommend that we approve the property presented as surplus and authorize the finance director to dispose of said property accordingly as allowed by state statute.
Motion and a second? Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, it's on agenda. But all that information was in your packet. What would be the pleasure of the board?
We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Kelly, you're up. Appointments.
Yeah, we have appointments for the month. The Henderson Planning Board reappoint Paul Cruz. The Henderson Zoning Board of Adjustments reappoint Danny Wilkerson. The Vance County Planning Board reappoint Thomas Shaw, Ruth Jones, and Benny Finch. Uh, the Public Health Board, we had an application received, uh, from Gary Smith to fill the medical doctor position. And one application received for the Library Board of Trustees to fill a vacant position from Tamika Jones.
Okay, what would be the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, we have all, uh, a motion to approve all appointments as stated by Ms. Grissom. Um, we have a second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed? Motion carries. The next thing I see on my paper is nothing. So what would be the pleasure of the board? Okay. Thank y'all for being here tonight. And, uh, yeah, if we can keep this like this, we'll be all that too.